For the meeting. That's 10 over 7. Approval and signatures. Alana, who do we have for approval and signatures?
Um, the meeting minutes.
All the minutes.
April 8.
Okay. Anybody have a chance to read them over? Any changes, corrections, or deletions? I will, uh... Accept the... Motion to accept the minutes of Monday, April 8, 2019.
Second?
I have a motion, second, to accept the minutes of Monday, April 8, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. She wouldn't dare have any mistakes, would she?
Be unusual.
Be very unusual. Oh, do you need signatures on the back of this?
Yes. That's just one of them.
Today is the 6th?
Six.
5th?
Six.
Six.
You have a sign of your own?
No, I think just one copy, right?
Yeah, just one.
Just one of those.
And Alana, we need a roll call vote to, uh, release the, uh... Executive session minutes?
Yes. For March 11.
All those in here also?
Um, nope, you were in the room then.
All right.
Do you need a copy? You approved the last meeting.
Okay, I need a motion to, uh... Release the executive session minutes.
For March 11.
For March 11th, I'll entertain a motion to release the minutes.
Make a motion to release the minutes, the executive session, for March 11th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to release the executive session minutes of March 11th, 2019. Casaya? How do you wrote?
That was a present.
Peter?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Compliment.
Oh, aye. That was a great meeting.
Passed us.
You have to be here every day.
2, 4, 5, 0. Okay? All right, let's get right into petition number 89599 Hudson Street Special Permit for an In-Law Apartment. 895, did I say it? Yes, I did. Jamie St. Andre? Hi, how are you? Good, thank you.
It's a renewal.
Oh, it's a renewal, that's right. Any changes?
No.
Same, same people?
Same people.
People living there?
Yes.
No, uh, no changes to the structure or anything like that? No, nothing added on, or petitions moved, or anything like that?
So this is actually a new special permit? And then five years from now, five, five, every five years they'll do, you'll do a review? So that's how we're doing it.
Well, she doesn't have to come in, right? Is that what it is?
Um, she may have to come in, but it's...
You don't have to advertise it all?
Yeah, exactly.
Because that's how it's supposed to be, but I guess the way it was already, um, anyways, whatever said that, that wasn't true, so we have been lying all over again.
We have...
And they also said that it would be now, it was illegal in law, but that it being in law, so if you ever sold, it goes with it now, or it didn't before.
It, it stays with the land? Or stays with the applicant, so who?
No, um, I don't know, was it you were talking about? I heard a talk to somebody in the board.
Probably the...
They said that it would now be, I don't know, a public apartment in law, like...
You're talking about legal in law apartments?
Like if you ever sold it, like when the person sold it to us, we had brought through our list because it didn't go with the house, but they said now would be a new review, and if it's not out of the house, if we're gonna sell it, it wouldn't be sold.
Subject to review of the board.
They're transferable with the land. They'll be transferable with the land.
Because they have changed the law.
That passed already.
They'll be advertised as an in-law at times.
Is it a change in the bylaw, or is it a change in the... The way we read the bylaw?
What was it that I spoke to?
It was the going inspector.
Okay.
It was what, Alana?
The going inspector, yeah.
He said to make sure it was written that way because that's the laws, he said.
Okay, did that pass already, or is that gonna be town meeting? Did it pass already, or did it...
Oh, from last year, 2008. Yep.
All right.
So just, we won't, we won't use the word expire?
Yeah.
We'll just say five years, there will be a review, if you approve it.
All right, uh, Mrs. St. Andre, the only thing I have, I got a letter here from the, uh... From the, uh, town treasurer, that according to our bylaw 183-2, that, uh, there is a... At 99 Hudson Street, there is a 2019 recycling balance that's 30 days overdue, that has to be paid before we can approve this.
I didn't know that.
Yes, I, I just, uh, received this today. So it's a total of, well, 105, uh...
All the state of children have that bill downstairs, and you tell me.
Right, they, they did submit a copy of it from, uh, a 183-2 on, uh, on the payment. Alana?
Yes.
Can, does that have to be paid before we can review this, or can our, uh... Our approval be subject to? As a condition?
So you have the bylaw that actually talks about that, and...
Okay, let me read it.
Yes.
Maybe that would help. Call me crazy. Uh, "The licensing authority may deny, revoke, or suspend any license or permit, including renewals, and transfer of any party whose name appears on the said list furnished to the licensing authority from the tax collector, provided, however, that written notice is given to the party and the tax collector as required by applicable provisions of the laws. And the party is given a hearing to be held not earlier than 14 days after said notice. Said list shall be prima facie evidence for denial, revocation, and suspension of said license or permit to any party. The tax collector shall have the right to intervene in any hearing conducted with respect to such license denial, revocation, or suspension. Any finding made by the licensed authority with respect to such license denial, revocation, or suspension shall be made only for the purpose of the proceeding and shall not be relevant to or introduced in any other proceeding of law except for any appeal from such license denial, revocation, or suspension. Any license or permit denied, suspended, or revoked under this section shall not be reissued or renewed until the licensing authority receives a cert certificate issued by the tax collector that the party is in good standing with respect to any and all local taxes, fees, assessments, bediments, or other municipal charges payable to the municipal pality as of the date of issuance of said certificate." So that pretty much spells it out, we can't, uh, renew this until we get a notification from the tax collector that it's been paid.
Okay, so now what does that do?
Well, you'll have to go down, uh, take care of the balance, or whomever.
Yeah.
Uh, words to, and then, uh, come back to the board and, and we'll vote on it, to, uh, to review it and renew it.
I have to back again to another?
Yeah, you'll have to. We can't act on it under the bylaw until it, until we see...
Because it'll be down later, correct?
Correct.
Given our party's chip, oh, it doesn't matter, right?
Correct.
You wouldn't have thought they could have said something? I mean, without all this...
Well, I know, it's been at least 30 days, I guess, anyway.
But they were supposed to send a certified letter, which I never received either.
Uh, not the tax collector?
No, no, no.
Right. So we can't act on petition number 895 until we, uh, get notification from the tax collector?
Table, table till next month?
What's that?
Table till next month?
Yes, we're gonna have to.
So what day is next month's meeting?
May 3rd.
May 3rd. Okay, awful sorry to drag you all the way up here, but, uh... I'm sorry?
Do you want a motion to continue?
Sure, yes, please.
I'll make a motion to continue petition 895 till the June 3rd meeting.
Do I have a second?
First.
Uh, all those in favor say aye, Casaya?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes. That's our bylaw. Okay, thank you. Hi, come on in. Kathleen Prey and Evelyn O'Rourke?
Yep.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
We have petition number 896. Kathleen Prey and Evelyn O'Rourke. Permit has been in place for 20 years in the name of Evelyn King, our mother. She passed away, it's September 10th. The deed area, and our names already, the house is occupied all family. Please vote to grant the continuation of the in-law apartment. Nothing's changed on the property?
No.
No additions, deletions? What do we have?
So we can also...
No building?
No.
Just extensions and stuff like that?
Just, yeah, just paint and whatnot? Yeah. No, uh, no walls have been taken down, or anything like that, or... Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? Accept the permit to renew and review?
Who's occupying the unit?
I've always lived there. My mother lived in the middle, my brother lived on the side, I lived on the other side. I most passed away. My sister, who's on the deed, she lives at 91 Circuit Street. She's putting her house up to say, um, to say my mother's passed away, she's moving into the other.
But in the meantime, her daughter's...
My daughter used to live there, but she just bought 175 on the street.
Just town, huh?
Because I'm a babysitter. So...
So they're all immediate family members?
Yeah, yeah.
Did someone say babysitter?
We have no plans to sell, we have no plans to...
Any other questions? Okay, I'll accept a motion regarding petition, uh, 896 at the 214 Elm Street property.
Motion to accept 896, that's the one.
Second?
And a second? Okay, I'll call for voice vote, Casaya? Peter?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passed us. You're all set.
So this is due in five years, correct?
Yes, same thing, Alana?
Yes.
Are we due in five?
They'll be reviewed in five.
Make sure nothing changes, and we still... All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That didn't even hurt, huh?
No. Three hours of nonsense, right there.
Oh, 7:25, that's the next one. Okay, 7:25. Sure, go ahead. What's that?
He was asking me to set it up.
Robert?
This should have been yours, that's supposed to be. Good to see you, right?
Still alive and kicking. Right along a gift card, whatever you say.
Yes.
It's, it's like, it's like a bad movie.
Sorry about that, I talked about...
No, no problem at all.
Play some boards.
Okay, seem that it's, uh, 7:25 or thereabouts. Uh, petition number, uh, 894 Campbell Lewis at 330 Plymouth Street, variance for parking, parentheses, O'Reilly's Auto. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May, on Monday, April 8, 2019, 7:25 PM, meeting number 1 of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Campbell Lewis for variances for off-street parking and minimum loading area at 330 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Hutten Team LLC of 736 Cherry Street, Chattanooga, Tennessee. It's shown on the assessors map, 63 lot 30, title reference book 42758, page 1. The applicant seeks variances permitting, permitting to the off-street parking requirements in accordance with the zoning, Halifax zoning bylaws, section 16714, and minimum loading area, section 167-3. First, the variance is requested for 34 parking spaces down from the required 73 parking spaces, section 167-14F, for the 7,225 square foot retail facility. Second, a variance is requested for 17 parking spaces with a paved area of 180 square feet down from the required 200 square feet, section 16714. Third, a variance is requested for a proposed loading area with a dimension of 20.5 feet wide and 35 feet long, as opposed to the required minimum loading area dimension of 14 feet wide by 45 feet, section 1673. Area zone, commercial business, petition 894. Hi, who do we have speaking?
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts with Solely Engineering Offices at Braintree, Hall Office Park in Braintree. Um, I, I wasn't able to be with you at the last meeting. I know, uh, my associate Casey Birch, uh, we had a long discussion on this project. Uh, since that last meeting, we submitted some additional information, uh, kind of a package to support our request for relief. I wanted to kind of run through some of the other history with the, with the site and run through our presentation again, and, um, you know, I think we can demonstrate that the, based on a number of parameters, you know, we believe that the variance is something that this board can approve, um, and there are some hardships established as part of, of the strict adherence to the regulations. So, um, just to... There are three items we're looking for, variances, um, have to do with the, the number of parking spaces, the parking space size, and then, and then the dimensions of the loading space. Um, just to give you guys some history, so, um, how to Halifax GIS mapping? When we first looked at this property, um, we were in work for Hutten, which is a single tenant developer out of Tennessee, and they've done a number of sites for O'Reilly's Auto Parts in this area. Um, and they identified Halifax as a, as a community they wanted to invest in, and, uh, O'Reilly's recognized it as a community they wanted to, to bring some commercial business to, invest in the community, create some tax base. And when we started, looking at the GIS, the parcel was actually anticipated to be much larger. So our initial application, our initial analysis was based on the parcel from the GIS map. We were able to actually comply with the parking requirements for 1 per 175 square feet, given the, uh, 40% open space coverage. And then, once we actually got a little bit deeper into, into the property, into the project, we realized that the parcel was actually subsequently considerably smaller than what we initially anticipated.
Okay, which one is at the registry of deeds? What's registered at the registry of deeds?
This one.
Okay.
So, so just, and I know this is somewhat, I'm just trying to give the narrative in terms of some history, just for the, for the board's education. So, even when we had this, this instance, we recognized that we had a much tighter site. We had another issue, we had some challenges to overcome. So when we relayed out the site plan, um, which has been presented to, to not only this board, but Conservation Commission Planning Board and the Board of Health, this property and this project has received approval from Conservation Planning, the Planning Board and the Board of Health, and obviously the last reason...
Using which plan?
This plan here.
Okay, using the GIS, or using the...
Nope, the actual...
The actual?
The actual registry of deeds. So, so this plan here, which is the plan that's being requested for variance relief of the requirements, has gone through Conservation Planning Board and the Board of Health. Um, now with this, we have some, we obviously have some site limitations, and there are some hardships on the property. And as we look through the zoning regulations, and even the master plan that was last updated in 2010, it's interesting, there are some goals in the master plan that actually talk about reducing parking requirements. And they talk about, you know, trying to reduce the, the need for some of the sea parking that kind of is in, in the stormwater associated with that, that's in some of the other developed areas in, in the town of Halifax. Now, in zoning regs themselves, um, section...
16714?
16714, exactly. 16714 identifies all parking requirements for the various uses in town. And, um, what it does is it actually, um, consolidates a lot of the various uses into, you know, one specific park requirement. So for retail, personal services, all those are all treated from the same, from the same requirement for parking as 1 per 175, if 40% of the lot is dedicated as open space, or 1 per 100 if it's, if it isn't. The interesting component of that is 16714K, or actually not K, yeah, K. An adequate number of spaces, actual number to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case basis, will be required to accommodate customers, patrons, and employees, the driving establishments, open-air retail businesses, amusements, and all other permitted uses, not specifically enumerated herein. When, when we as, as design professionals and engineers, when we look at projects like this, oftentimes municipalities and other, um, you know, uh, industry standards create parking requirements based on specific uses. So, a retail store that sells general retail merchandise may not have the same parking requirement as a grocery store. Um, and those can range through, you know, same thing with personal services, uh, you know, um, a doctor's office or medical office may not have the same requirement as an ale salon, or things like that. So, what we do is we've actually looked at the specific use, we've looked at some other industry standards, and the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a parking handbook. And what they do is they determine, based on national and regional studies, they look at, um, actual parking generation for various different types of retail uses. And they actually have 31 different retail categories that they break down individual parking requirements for. So while, um, Halifax has one that consolidates everything, their number of industry standards would actually support, you know, a variety of rates based on what the actual use is. We had actually looked at, um, and conducted a parking study for O'Reilly Auto Parts specifically to understand what their actual demand was, based on their actual operation. They're a auto parts store. Um, and the results of our study were actually very consistent with what the industry standards are, which is 13 to 14 parking spaces occupied at any given time, based on the overall gross floor area. So, while even though K allows us, allows the planning board on a case-by-case basis to approve a lower parking requirement if the specific use isn't defined, that was our initial approach to this. The planning board actually said, you know what, we like this project, you know, they granted approval, but they wanted us to come to the zoning board to comply with L, which says any variance from these requirements would have to get approved by the zoning board of appeals, which brings us here. Now, you know, as I stated, um, industry standards support far fewer parking spaces than what's required from, from the code. Um, empirical data from actual, you know, actual, overall, the auto parts stores supports the same thing. So we feel that a strict adherence to the regulations would create a hardship in trying to develop this property for the intended use. And we feel that we've, you know, provided, um, you know, through this presentation, and obviously the supplemental information we provided, it, it provides the, the board, the ability to make that determination and give that consideration. And I know that there was some discussion at the last hearing about precedent and what this means, but I think the fact that the zoning regulations actually defer variances, you know, variances from these items to this board gives this board a tremendous amount of power to really evaluate these applications on a case-by-case basis. So, just because this commit, this board would happen to consider, we're looking for apartment variance based on a specific use, and it provided adequate information to support that strict adherence to that requirement for that use would create a hardship, we feel that this board can take comfort in that, you know, this is a unique application, and a unique application that wouldn't create other issues. And I think that was, and again, I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting, the minutes weren't available, but from based on my discussions with, with Casey, I think that was some of the biggest concern that the board had. Now, you know, I, I want to get some feedback from the board, obviously, and, um, you know, to get a little bit of better understanding, but I, I believe that, based on what we've provided and the information that we've provided, I do believe that this is an application that this board can approve and can feel comfortable with, that because of the strict adherence to the regulations, that we create a hardship in the development of this, and that the fact that we are proposing a specific retail use with a specific parking requirement, I think, um, I think this is something that this board, you know, should certainly view favorable, and we request that consideration.
Okay, what, what about the, uh, the variance for the, uh, the loading area? What is the hardship there that you, that isn't self-created as far as complying with the Halifax zoning bylaw?
Well, I think, um, the overall size, and one of the things we provided in our, in our materials that we submitted, kind of demonstrates how this site could operate and how the site can operate. Now, um, the, again, the town Halifax and that, that loading space requirement, the dimensional requirement associated with it is a, is a standard requirement that you guys created. You know, we've tried to demonstrate that we can actually do it with less pavement area and less parking area, and the site can still operate effectively and adequately. The, Casey, what was our overall dimensions of the space, and what do we need to do?
Um, the length is 35, uh, they require 45, um, but our width is bigger than their width, so the total area of the loading space is equivalent to, to the regulations.
So we do, we do provide the adequate area in terms of square footage, but we are a little bit, uh, um, reduced from a dimensional standpoint. But again, from an operations standpoint, the site can accommodate, you know, standard operations for the intended use and the desired use.
Alana, certainly open us up to questions from the board, if a gentleman had any that you'd like to have addressed?
Um, I, so, the, the issue with, that I have, is that I don't think we have the power to, to do that. I think we specifically, the issue I have with this specifically is the bylaw itself ties the number of parking spaces to the square footage of the building. So, the hardship seems to be, and you can't even allude to it in the letter that you wrote, but the hardship seems to be that you economically want that size of a building on that size lot. And I, and the, it sounds like the, the variance we would be granting would be to, to you on any lot that size in town. Or anyone on that size lot in town, which is specifically not what we're supposed to be granting variances for under state law. So, it create, it, it's not the type of hardship that, so arguably, it's supposed to be that it would create some existing financial burden that is unique to you. Or some topographical issue with the land. And, um, and I have an inkling, because there's a lot of bylaws in Halifax that allude to this, that are way... The town of Halifax seems to be way outside the industry standard for everything. So, I'm not surprised that we're not the industry standard. There's a lot of towns that don't have an acre minimum for, for housing, that, that a lot of towns use. Um, so, that, your industry standard doesn't necessarily speak to our bylaws, because we have pretty strict bylaws and stuff like that. But it does seem to me to be that bylaws intent was to make sure that a building of that size, which there are lots in this town, I'm sure, that you wouldn't even need to come to us, and I'm, I'm sure the town would love the tax base, but in that specific lot, in that specific space, we would be granting a variance that anyone would, would then ask for. Um, and arguably, we cannot grant, because that's specifically what we're not supposed to do with the variance for any commercial business that wants to have that size building on a lot that size in this town.
So I think, I think state, I think Massachusetts state law actually, you know, empowers boards like this. Your variance doesn't have to be a blanket across all retail uses. I think this, this board could write an approval, consider this application, that a automobile... I think this, this board could write an approval, consider this application, that a automobile parts retail facility can operate at a lower parking requirement, which restricts the ability for any other general retail use to come onto this property and to benefit from that variance in the future. And I think that is what this board can use as a protection measure, to protect against someone trying to come to this board and say, "I want to put up a retail store, I want it to be, you know, I want it to not comply with the requirements, and you have to grant that variance." I don't think that's, you know, individual variance applications really are considered on a case-by-case basis, based on the evidence presented as part of that, part of that public hearing. So I think what we're specifically requesting, what we specifically provided, is that for an auto parts retail operator, the parking requirement that we're providing is sufficient, and we've provided sufficient evidence to support that. So this, so we're not requesting a blanket variance that put any retail use in this building on this site with the parking spaces that we're providing, we're not, we're not making that representation, we're not requesting that, that type of relief. We're, we're, our request is specific to the use prescribed, which gives you that, that, it should provide you with that comfort level to, and I think state law supports that. I think that's, you know, from a variance standpoint, from a zoning board of appeal standpoint, there's, there's, there's ample, you know, case law to, to allow for zoning boards of appeal to give that consideration for specific uses.
Which would be exactly the argument if a, if a, another corporation that used some sort of industry standard to use a size that lot, that, that size, would want to make to us to grant their variance as well. Like, and, and the intent of the bylaw seems to be, to me, and I'm just speaking for myself, but the intent of the bylaw is specifically tied to the size of the building. So it, it creates, it creates a hardship for businesses that want to have a building that size on a lot that size with, with the parking requirement.
Well, I think, I think there's also other considerations, though, when you look at how different retail operations or other buildings are, are established and set up, right? When you go back and you look at how this specific building is developed and, and, you know, constructed, from an auto parts store standpoint, the amount of area that's actually dedicated to the retail sale is very small. It has a much larger, you know, back of house, storage area, things like that, that is, that is, that is unique when you look at how retail buildings are designed and constructed. So, so I think, I think that kind of further supports that argument that, you know, this is a very specific, unique user, so we're requesting relief for, for parking relief for a specific user, based on empirical data and industry standards, which support that. I, I agree, and I think that's the beauty of zoning boards of appeals and variance applications. Every application has the fault, has sustained on its own variance. And this board is given, through state law, a tremendous amount of, of oversight and discretion in reviewing these applications. You know, if this was, when we went through the analysis and all of a sudden found out that our lot was considerably smaller than how the initial real estate deal was first kind of created and crafted, you know, we recognized right away, most communities aren't supportive of blanket variances to allow for, you know, reduced requirements. But when we actually look at, and when we look at kind of, you know, even other, even other surrounding municipalities, and other industry standards and things like that, and what we, what we've seen, and how other communities have kind of received this, since it is such a unique user, you know, we, we talked through that, we went through the planning board, and we, you know, obviously, we, we met with, we've gone, we've been working on this project for probably...
Three months, three months just for the, for the board process.
Yeah.
Went through three planning board meetings, three conservation commission meetings, and one sidewalk, and one board of health meeting.
So, so your name, just for...
For the record, my name is Casey Birch, I'm a civil engineer, first civil engineer, and I've been kind of through this whole process this and that time. So yeah, we've been through...
The ring. We've been through the ring, we have. And I, but, but I, I certainly hear your concern, and I appreciate that concern. But that's why I wanted to make sure that, again, since I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, I want to make sure I was here to kind of talk through this a little bit. Because as a ZVA, you do have that ability and that discretion and that power to be, have it be specific to this use, so that if one day O'Reilly's Auto Parts doesn't want to operate in here anymore, that doesn't mean any other user can just come in here and benefit from this variance. You can write this in such a way, and we've requested it in that way, that requesting a parking variance for that specific use of, of a auto, retail auto parts store, not just a general retail store, you know, and not all the other categories that even fit into that, office, personal service, things like that, you know, we're not requesting it to apply in a blanket fashion, we're, we're looking for the relief, specific to an auto parts retailer.
With the, the board of health, one of their requirements, because we're using their meter readings, again, kind of similar, but in a, in a sanitary fashion, we're using meter readings to design our septic. You have to get a waiver for that against the Title V. And part of their agreement was to, you know, put a deed restriction on this land to, that way, if, if any other use ever came in, it'd have to go back to the board of health, they'd have to do an entire redesign. So it's kind of similar in that way, but through a sanitary aspect.
So, so just to give, so from a Title V standpoint, obviously, buildings serving on septic systems have to comply with the health code based on septic generation, so it would that use. In a very similar fashion, general retail septic generation is far more than septic generation for this specific user. So we were able to go to the board of health, we provided empirical data of actual water usage for this specific user, and that was, that was reviewed and approved at their last hearing. So similar, similar from a ZVA standpoint, the board of health actually also included a deed restriction, so that the septic system we're constructing as part of this facility is unique in design for this specific operation. So, that same protection is actually in place, not only from what this board could review and approve, but also on the board of health side, too. Anybody can't come in here in the future and put any of the other uses that could be, you know, legally allowed per the zone, because the septic field is constructed specifically for this user. And that's actually covered through a deed restriction. So I think the zoning board of appeals, and the appeal that we're, or the approval that we're requesting from this board, could actually further even reinforce that, you know, so that it's very clear. It, it's going to be clear from a deed restriction, you can't put other uses in here without going back through the whole septic approval process. With the zoning board of appeal variance, that same thing can be reinforced from a parking standpoint, to kind of really make it very, you know, understood, without any confusion or any, any ambiguity, that this is specific to a specific user and a specific type of operation.
A question for you, when you found out that your land was not the, the same we found here, did you, did you go back to find out whether you could purchase additional land to make this project work? I know it's wetland, I think you mentioned before, it's wetland, you can't do with anything out there.
Yeah, you really can't do much.
Yeah, there are wetlands that continue off the, off to the rear of the property. When we looked at this, and we kind of did some evaluation internally, and kind of reviewed it with the, with the, with the developer, the property owner, you know, based on everything, including our initial conversations with conservation and planning, this was the, the path, this was the, the desired path to proceed. And this was, and, you know, we're here again, because this is some of the direction that we received through this process. So rather than trying to go back and buy additional land, a lot of which is, is generally unusable...
It's still green space. It would give you what you need to get back to the original reserve plot of land.
Yeah, I think, I think part of the other one is there were some other, there were some other, you know, because this was all kind of formed as part of a subdivision, and, you know, this parcel here included this driveway, which was supposed to line up with the signal at some point, so there were other implications with trying to just simply add some additional acreage. So there were some other challenges with that, to try to add the additional open space. But again, when we, when we got back to it, and when we really looked at it, it, we work in a lot of municipalities, we work in a lot of different types of projects, and, you know, a lot of municipalities have different requirements, parking requirements, things like that. One of the things that, from, from an engineering standpoint, we can usually try to make it work, but what I hate to do is to build, you know, to, to overbuild, just to simply meet a requirement, when it doesn't necessarily provide any benefit. You know, we, we don't want, we don't like to build, you know, expansive parking lots that create additional stormwater runoff that has to be treated, and it may be detained or attenuated, you know, if it's just going to basically serve as a big empty parking lot. So, so as, while we, while we often design to meet the requirements, because that may be the path of least resistance, you know, it does kind of, it kind of gets under my skin sometimes, when you drive through one of these big shopping centers, and there's just seas of, sea of pavement that never gets utilized. So we always try to build in some of those low-impact development, you know, strategies, and this is actually one of those strategies. We don't want to build more pavement than necessary, if we can still accommodate the actual intended use in the operation of the facility.
And, look, none of, not, all of the Title V, 7, 7 you mentioned makes sense to me, and I think that, that, I think that would support our, our decision, if that's what we want to do. But the concern for us, I think, or for me specifically on this board, is, is land use. And, and the concern is not necessarily the fact, kind of like, the amount of land that's being used, right? And what it's being used for. You're, you're arguably asking for the variance, because with the size of the building that you want to put on this lot, you don't have the room for the parking spots that you need. And so, if we were having a conversation about a variance for parking spots, because you didn't want to put them in a certain area where the topography of the land was different because of the amount of the land that you had, and it didn't look like you were covering the entire land, I think that would be easier. I mean, that was the specific comment that people in the, the last hearing had, about the, the way, the amount of coverage on that lot, and the amount of land that you had to use. And that, and it's the, the, the concern for me is that the bylaw specifically doesn't make the, the distinctions that you're making, specifically, I think, because they don't want to see the size of the buildings that you, that, that this is without the, the land around it and the space.
What is the size, 7225 square feet?
Correct.
Then that's, that's my concern, and, and the rest of, the rest of those concerns that you bring up make sense, they do. The concern that I have specifically is, is the, the coverage on that lot, and the s, the size of the, the development that's going in there. And so, the, the crux of the thing that we were talking about last time, I was, we were talking last time, was you could, you could currently have that number of parking spots, you just want that size of a building. And the hardship then is you, you are not, perhaps, you said in here, won't make enough money, but you could move that to a different lot or something like that.
Well, well, let's, so, so, so let's talk about the, the land use, there's a couple of...
Yeah, it was going along.
Yeah. So, so let's talk about the land use itself, right? So the coverage, the coverage complies with, the overall coverage of the property complies with zoning regulations, right? So we're, we're not, we're not, we're not requesting a variance for the amount of coverage, impervious surface or anything like that, we're simply requesting a variance for the parking spaces. So from a, from an impact standpoint, right? Let's say that we were to reduce the size of the building, put in the different, so let's say we were to, we were to develop a plan, we're going to have the same exact impervious surface, but we were going to have a little bit of a smaller building and more parking spaces, right? Which is going to create additional traffic impact on the roadway network, because you're going to have more turnover, and you're going to have, you know, so maybe a smaller building footprint, but more parking spaces. So I don't really see how, now, that would be to accommodate any other particular type of use, which may actually have a higher parking requirement. We're simply proposing an alternative type of use that has a lesser parking requirement, which really is kind of more advantageous, because it has less of an impact, you know, from an overall environmental standpoint, because we're not, we don't need to build additional parking spaces. Like, like to, to your point, if we added additional area and built additional parking to comply with that requirement, we would then have half of the parking lot empty at all times, because the specific use needs 12 to 14 parking spaces, that's supported both by industry standard data and empirical data from parking requirement standpoint. If we were proposing 34 parking spaces, right? Coverage complies with the requirements, the type of use, the type of store itself, the amount of retail floor area in that store, when you unwrap the whole package, it lead, it need, it has less of an impact, and it requires less total parking, parking area. So, while we think we're going to need 14 parking spaces at any given time, we're actually providing 34, so we have 20 spaces more than we need, but if we were to provide, try to strictly comply with the regulations, and we believe that a strict adherence to those regulations create a hardship, because it creates a need for more disturbance than what is necessary to accommodate the use, the intended use.
I hear what you're saying, but if you were to add just the wetland, that would be considered green space, you could still keep the 34 spaces, because that allows you to have less, less parking. We're not looking for more parking. We're trying to, you know, if you had, if you had additional acreage, that would get you within that 45%, then there'd be no problem here. Because you could have the 34 parking spaces, and what, and everyone's fine.
No, we would have, we would need, we would need 42, 42 parking spaces, if we were to use the 40%, right? So, so there's something in the regulations that say, we can't come in and develop the same amount of impervious area on this property, we just may have to have a little bit of a smaller building. We don't want to develop a smaller building, we want to develop a less intensive use on this property. And the parking requirement is specific to that use, and that's what we're, that's what we're requesting.
So then what you're saying, too, is once, if and when, say the board did grant the variances, the only other business, if O'Reilly's went out of business, the only other business that could move in there would be another parts company?
Correct. Another, we're, we're requesting the, the parking variance, specific for an auto parts retailer. So, you know, either, either an AutoZone, or an Advanced Auto Parts, or an independent operator, those are the only people who can come into this site and operate this size building with the parking that's provided.
Or they could ask for another lot of the same size, the same type of scenario on a different lot, because we've set a precedent for that, which probably wouldn't happen. I don't think anybody has a, disagrees with what you're saying about, you know, there's going to be 13, 14 people in there at the most. I think our problem is we're kind of bound by our bylaws, and that's what we're looking at. So is there any state legislation you can point to that supersedes, or tells us we can do what you're asking us to do?
Well, I think, I, I think the zoning regulations itself, by, through L, of the parking requirement, says any variant, any deviation from this comes to the zoning board of appeals. And only zoning board of appeals can grant that relief. State statutes that create the mechanism for zoning boards of appeals allows and gives this board, or similar to this, the ability to vary and waive parts of the zoning regulations on an application-by-application basis, based on, you know, whatever evidence is, is submitted as part of the record of that independent application. So, so yeah, I think there's, there's ample, you know, state law, zoning boards of appeals wouldn't exist if state's law didn't say, there are unique opportunities where a zoning board of appeals can and should consider waiving certain requirements. And, and we believe that this is, this is appropriate.
But it's linked to a hardship.
Right. Our hardship is strict adherence of the parking requirements for general retail, for a specific auto parts retailer, creates an undue hardship.
But it's not, it's not just a...
It's an auto parts really, retailer, it's an auto parts retailer with that square footage.
Well, we're, we're...
If you had half the square footage, you wouldn't be here.
We're, we're, we're requesting...
Sorry to cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, no, but, but we're requesting the relief, the, the parking variance for an auto parts retailer. So, the same thing to your point.
No, but you're, for an auto parts retailer of that, you would not be here if you were an auto parts retailer with 3,600 square feet, because you would be fine.
For instance, if somebody came to us and said, "I want to build this huge house," and, and, you know, "I want a variance for this, this, and the other thing," just because I want it, well, that's creating your own hardship, and you can't do that. I think that's, and I'm speaking, I might be speaking for everybody, but for myself, that's, can we get around, can we, you know, properly get around it?
Well, and that's, and that's why I think that the, the one parking space per 100 square feet is the hardship in itself. And the relief that we're requesting is instead of one space per 100 square feet, we're requesting one space per...
Two, is it? Yeah, 200, yeah.
Pull your phone out, do the math.
But the bylaw can't be the hardship, the bylaw is what the rule is, and you don't meet the...
Well, but, but that's, but that's why we're here, right? We're saying, for big, in the absolute definition of an auto parts retailer or a specific retailer, by, by applying the blanket retail requirement to this specific use is the hardship. So we're requesting relief for, for a variance on the parking requirements, based on the actual use that we're requesting.
So, so the argument is your, the square footage, half of your square footage shouldn't matter?
From a parking requirement standpoint, yes.
Because of the industry that you're in.
Yes, both, both, both based on industry standards, the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Which might be the intent of the bylaw.
Well, but, but, but the, the intent of the bylaw, that, I don't believe the intent, I believe the intent of the bylaw is... I don't believe the intent, I believe the intent of the bylaw is to, you know, reasonably manage development in the community, right? Now, now that kind of comes in a couple of different ways, right? I think that the, the master plan that was last updated in 2010 actually identifies and recognizes that you should, the town should require less parking. That's one of the, that is one of the goals.
For this use?
For, in general. In general, I think, because I think if you look at some of the other development areas that have happened, I mean, look at, look at the Stop and Shop across the street. Anytime you pull into that Stop and Shop, the corners in most of that parking lot are empty, right? That creates additional environmental impact with, with the heat island of all that asphalt pavement. It creates additional stormwater runoff that needs to be treated or attenuated, and it could potentially contribute to flooding for downstream, things like that. So, I think while the, the, the regulations themselves, they don't prohibit us from developing this much of the property, right? They, 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 they would rather see, based on the regulations that one for one hundred, they'd rather see more parking than building.
Well, you could get six more parking spaces and arguably with the, the, the variance to have smaller parking spaces if you had forty-five percent of the lot that was unused. The intent is to, to give an incentive for that.
No, no, I understand that. But, but what we're saying is the, the intended and the desired, the intended and desired use doesn't even warrant that. And that's what we're requesting from, from the zoning board to, to consider.
Yeah, I don't think there's a parking lot in town that's full. I don't think there's a parking lot in town that's full.
Well, exactly.
I think you're right about that, but, yeah.
But that's what we have to work with.
Right.
But, but, but again, I think, you know, this board can approve a, a parking variance for a specific use. And it can be memorialized in the approval that, you know, you can't come in and just put any other use in this lot because it wouldn't comply with the variance.
I would like to see, I would like to see an example of that somewhere that somebody's done that.
A deed restriction?
Well, the Board of Health is requiring it from a septic standpoint. So, that's something that, we know that, that the Board of Health in the town of Halifax has considered, has granted a waiver, and has made that a requirement. The zoning board of appeals is doing the same thing. And, and certainly your point too about the, the concern about another auto parts store trying to come in and apply the same variance, this board has the complete autonomy and discretion to review and approve any application on a case-by-case basis. Now, even if, with that being said, if another auto parts store wanted to come in and didn't want to build a sea of parking that's gonna be empty all the time, this board may want to consider that. And I think, and I think the planning board and the zoning regulations support that by having that caveat in there that says any variances from these requirements have to come with the zoning board of appeals, which is why we're here.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen?
I, I just.
Oh, yeah, please.
Want to ask a question?
Building's about it.
And, and not to confuse the matter, but I agree with the law you're saying. And I think this would be a good, a good additive to the town that is welcome. We're talking about variances for parking. So, we've, we've listed three or four different variances. The fact that you want to put it specifically to automotive parts or the automotive industry, are you asking for a use variance?
We're not asking for a use variance because automotive retailer kind of falls into the parent of retail from a use. But we think that the, that a parking requirement, we're looking for a specific park requirement for the, kind of like the subsection of automo, automotive, you know, auto, auto parts retail. So, the use is still limited.
It's a separate, like you said, it's, it's this whole thing that that falls into. But you're, you're asking for a variance for that specific use.
Right.
No, no, you're asking.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I understand what he's saying too. But that's really not, you're, you're asking for a variance with the specific enumeration saying that it's, it's going to be used for that. You're not looking for an overall.
And I'm not saying that they, they can't provide that if they talk to council and that's something that they can provide within a letter of their law. I just want to make sure we're asking for the correct things that you're asking for.
Of course. No, and I appreciate that, actually. That's.
So, was it a variance on based, parking based on square footage? Is that the variance?
Yes.
We're changing square footage.
For auto parts retail stuff.
For auto parts retail.
And on this application only. This isn't something that's, you know.
And just, just so I'm clear on it. When you, when you went back to the planning board and they approved it, I guess I'm having a little problem here with the red line where it shows a portion of the building.
So, so this was, so this initial, this is basically, when, when we first looked at the overall, when we first looked at the overall, this was what we talked about, you know, from a property standpoint. When we actually went, registry of deeds, had the property survey, this was the actual, actual property line. So, this is just, this is just a comparison showing this complies, this layout, these parking spaces, this configuration complied with the one for one seventy-five, and we had forty percent open space. When we put the actual property line on here, that layout no longer worked. So, we then went through the process of redesigning and we came up with the current site plan, which has been approved by conservation.
So, that part is the red.
So, yes, this property line is the red.
Like a job that went over.
The building has been moved over. The building is completely within the building setbacks. You know, all of the other applicable zoning bulk requirements are met and comply with.
How many square feet is of that lot showing there?
Total lot, square feet.
Acreage is point nine eight.
Is it, is it the forty-three thousand plus?
Yes, yeah.
Is it?
Yes.
The variable was different.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a legal lot. It was subdivided. So, would have had to have complied with the overall bulk requirements for acreage.
Was it, it was formatted, correct?
Shoot.
Was that an A and R plan?
The subdivision plan?
That one there.
Oh, type, the survey, is he answering? After what, survey?
I'm just, I'm just confused as to where, where the original GIS map came.
That's the current, that's the current town of Halifax GIS. That's how that parcel was depicted. So, I just think that was never.
And it was based on, it must have been based on something.
I think it was based on the parcel prior to subdivision. So, there was a subdivision approval that the requisite parcel configuration was never rectified or memorialized in the GIS.
Was it recorded?
It was recorded. Yes, it was recorded, Matt.
I mean, it's the GIS.
Yeah.
That's what I.
No, the GIS is just a, is just a tool that the town has to.
Yeah, but it's based on. It's over forty thousand square feet, so it's a, a lot of the business areas, they can, they can use it.
Forty-three thousand twelve square feet is the overall parcel. And actually, even to your point too, this is just kind of showing some of the overall properties. This is in the packet. There's actually some of the area in the back. So, this flag lot kind of comes back because this was gonna be a subdivision of it at some point. This is actually, is an agreed area of no build. So, it's like that, that whole concept of, you know, additional open space, it's actually already memorialized based on how the, how the area around the, the property has been kind of established.
So, where, where did the mess up come from?
What do you mean?
How, how was the assessment different from what deed recorded? Where did that, how did that happen?
I think, I think what I think will.
How can that happen? I guess is my question.
I, I think, you know, I think what likely usually happens is there's always subdivisions and things like that. Those maps get recorded. But I think just sometimes the, whoever's administering the GIS doesn't necessarily get all those plans and is always on top of updating to show new property lines and things like that.
But the form A that you have cited is specific to the book page and deed that you're showing us tonight.
So, yeah, the property, oh, yeah. No, we have the record map. We have the, it's, I can't even tell what map number it is.
Sixty dash zero zero or something, I think it was.
Recorded on Plymouth County Registry of Deeds is Plan Forty-seven in Book Fifty-seven, Page Eight-seventy-seven. Two thousand thirteen. So, essentially, since, from two thousand thirteen today, the GIS is still showing inaccurate property lines. But that's all kind of moot. It's kind of independent.
We want to know specifically who, who approved it.
No, and I wanted, I wanted to give you guys some history just to kind of let you understand how we got here today. Like I said, we, we like to just try to design things to comply with the regs to avoid some of these steps, generally.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But, but when we're in a situation like this and we do feel like we have, we can give the zoning board of appeals sufficient, you know, evidence and information that you guys can feel confident in and rely upon to, to administer an approval, we, we do feel comfortable in that side, in that regard as well.
But it's still the, like must have gone on and you said, "Oh, go ahead, report the fee line." What we originally designed.
The, the property is pretty much hacked. It was, area-wise, we were very shocked. Back to the drawing board, they say, when, when that happened, so.
But again, just to reiterate, there has been an approved form A from the planning board on this, what we're reviewing tonight.
Yes.
To that, to, to that specific lot.
Right, to this.
Thirty-eight, that's listed as thirty-eight. And it's, it's over forty thousand square feet.
Yep.
So, it's, it's, it's a buildable.
It, it's a buildable lot and the, the planning board has actually approved this specific site plan before you.
Because you can understand, when you see a portion of the building over the red line, it's a shade of concern.
And, and when we first, when we finally got our survey in and we went and then tried to overlay to see what we were dealing with and we found that same thing. We said, "We need to come up with some, we need to figure out how we can make this work." And, you know, I think, I think we've been able to design a site that's appropriate given the use. I think this is consistent with what you see at any of these other, you know, national chains kind of throughout the area and throughout the region. You know, we, like I said, we've gone through conservation. We've gone through planning board. We even went through Board of Health. And, you know, getting that waiver from Board of Health and that deed restriction requirement is, you know, a little bit unique, but it's unique specific to the use that we're, that we're requesting. And I think the zoning board of appeals can, can take that same level of, of comfort and assurance that you're completely within the, the rights prescribed to you by the state of Massachusetts to consider this application.
Well, not to put you on the squad like up down millionaires in the past, but as, as far as the building inspector and zoning enforcement goes, are you comfortable with restrictions such as that that are placed on?
As long as they meet the requirements. My, my only concern is, you know, perhaps you talk to the town council as far as, you know, what constitutes a, a use variance and is, is that, is that going to be considerable? But you're putting something specific to a specific use within the bylaw.
And to be honest with you, it's something we've never done before.
Automotive retail. The answer is gonna be no. Like, the answer is gonna be.
Well, I, I'm not gonna, I'm just.
The question, the question is all about whether or not we're comfortable having, allowing this variance specifically with that size building because of the, the merits that he's, that, it's, I mean, I don't know if there's a legal issue at all. I think the issue is.
Well, and again, that's.
Right. Yeah, right, right, right. Which makes sense.
To the point that can, can we legally put that kind of condition like the, like conservation put on, on, on the septic? Could we make that specific condition to this, to this application?
Well, again, what are you approving? Are you approving a special permit or are you approving a variance?
Would be approving a variance.
So, can you put stipulations on variances? I would think that you, you can.
What stipulation?
But, but what's, what's the variant? Is it a dimensional variance or is it a, a density variance?
It, it's not a, it's not a density variance because it doesn't exceed the underlying dimension.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. Arguably, because it's tied to square footage.
Well, it's, it's a part, the, the, what, what it's a variance is, a variance from, the requirement is one parking space per one hundred square feet. We're requesting a relief from that to be one parking space per two hundred and twenty, twenty square feet. So, that's the variance. It's a, it's a variance on the parking requirement. To your point, it's not a use variance request because a use variance would be if, if, if this was a residential zone and retail wasn't a permitted use in the zone and we were requesting the ZB to approve retail in that zone, that would be a use variance.
I understand.
Yeah. But this is simply a, a variance on the parking requirement, the ratio. Now, to your, to your point, you know, again, we've tried to design a site that we feel best fits within the constraints of the site and complies with the operational requirements of the intended use. As we said, our loading space is a little bit short dimensionally but it means it requires square footage. If this board didn't feel comfortable with waiving the ten foot on the loading space depth, we could revise that. We could probably expand the partner to accommodate that, to meet that specific requirement. But from an operational standpoint, we don't believe that is necessary, which is why we're here, which is why we requested seventeen of the spaces to be one hundred eighty square feet instead of two hundred square feet and why we're requesting to build fewer spaces than the.
As long as we're discussing that point, you noted in, in your revision for tonight's meeting, could you show how the, how the, you specifically said how the delivery truck would be coming in, pulling in, backing in, and reloading? You made reference to it.
It's, yeah, there's actually a truck turning movement in there that shows how a truck can come in, how it can back in, and how it can actually unload without any interference with any parking spaces.
And what would be the hours of the delivery? You enumerated them also?
Those happen at off-hours. Just to not create, you know, conflicts with, with people visiting the site.
It, off, um, peak hours, yeah, peak hours. So, it would be closer to the.
Retail peak hours, not so much.
Right.
It would still be nine o'clock in the morning, seven to nine?
I, I think they said eight o'clock or around five. So, it's either at the beginning, at the opening or closing of the.
All right, I'm just giving thought to, especially that early in the morning on one oh six is a pretty heavily trafficked time for, for all trucks, not just, I mean, for pulling in Walmart, Stop and Shop, Dunkin' Donuts, all of them.
And we did do, as part of our planning board approval, we did do a kind of a comprehensive traffic study, you know, based on this use and including truck traffic on how this intersection is gonna operate. You know, even if, you know, during those peak periods, those peak, you know, weekday, afternoon, peak periods and, and Saturday, midday, peak periods with all those periods and this, this can operate without any adverse impact to the, to the network and there's no queuing issues or things like that. And I think the planning board was comfortable, obviously, if they granted it some. Well, do you have any other questions or anything?
You answered a lot of the trailers pulling in. I mean, if they could, you know, they would obviously be taking up a few, few spaces if they parked in front of them. But, you know, the hours that would be up to, you know, again, the board would consider.
Yeah, could they still make those kind of maneuvers if there were customers parked in, in the front and across the side?
They can actually, and, and those, those truck turning figures actually show like the outer vehicle, the wheel path. So, it shows that they can actually come in here, maneuver, and not cross over any, assuming all the parking spaces.
Would that be the largest truck going in, the wheelbase fifty?
Yes, yep.
No problem, or?
It's, you know.
Stint.
If they can show that they can make the maneuvers. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the fire chief looked at it for his vehicles, I'm hoping he looked at it for his vehicles.
Yes, yep. And, and while we designed it for that, a lot of the stuff that comes in out of the store is actually the smaller box trucks and things like that, so. But for the, for the chance that one does come, it was designed appropriately.
Because I heard that, are you all good with this or do you have to recuse yourself? Are you good? Because, I mean, you don't own the property. Just wanted to make sure. Gentlemen, any other questions or anything? Comments? Did you have any other questions or comments, man?
No, the only thing I'm here for.
Your name, please.
This is the only meeting I haven't been to, you know, outside of three forty for me. And the only thing we were here for was the drainage.
And I think you addressed that pretty well at the, at the last meeting.
Yes.
It's been a consideration.
Yep, and at every meeting for conservation and planning. That's pretty much why we went into three meetings, they really wanted to go out, see the, see the site, see how things drain now and, and, and we definitely have designed the site to, to improve the current condition. With, with the detention basin in the rear, we were able to attenuate the peak discharge rate as well as be able to recharge more water into the ground as opposed to sheet flowing off into the rear property. We also diverted all of our water to this corner where there is a current swale here. So currently the existing conditions, sheet flows, kind of splits in the middle, some sheet flows over to the bank property and some sheet flows over to this swale. We're diverting all the water to that swale and it's actually good that we are because the neighbor's concern is with the bank currently and its flooding conditions that it has for its undersized basin in the rear. And our improvements theoretically should improve any overflow. This corridor currently floods during really high storm events at what I'm told by the, the highway department. We have a couple, actually, I can show you real quick. We've implemented several drainage designs that would alleviate, potentially alleviate that current issue, current road flooding. So the, the highway department currently has a drainage pipe that goes, just dies into our property. And it's, so all the water from the, the route one oh six flows down past us towards the fire department and, and outlets in that, I think there's a river down there. But in high storm events, this, there's a manhole here that kind of acts as a diversion. So it splits the water, so it goes into our site or it goes down to, towards the fire department. And then because our sites, this pipe right here is completely buried, it is a surcharge, charge condition, which ends up surcharging into the street, which ends up surcharging into the bank's property that has a lower catch basin than the road. So it spills into the bank's property, goes in, affects their property eventually. So what we're doing is creating a pavement leak-off here. So if it ever does reach the planet street's surface, it'll go down and around into the swale and, and get back to where our point discharge is here. We are also taking the pipe that's currently going just into the ground in our property and we're gonna have an outlet here, we're gonna raise it a little so the only thing that actually goes from the town will be the high level overflow for higher storm events. And that way it'll, it'll take less water into the rear property and eventually into her, the neighbor's swale here. Because this all connects and goes back in behind their, their property here. So those were the kind of improvements that we did to the site along with our detention basin to sat, to satisfy the highway department, planning board and the, the neighbor property.
And the conservation commissioner.
And the conservation commissioner.
Well, just don't forget that.
So, 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 so the site in itself, as it currently sits, has a whole lot of hair on it. And we tried to design something that we think, you know, is a, is a big improvement from what's there now. We tried to design something that we think is, can be, you know, harmonious with the town of Halifax, can be a, you know, a good investment in the community and contribute to the overall tax base and, and with, with minimal impacts and actually considerable number of improvements from an environmental standpoint. And, you know, we believe that the thirty four parking spaces we're proposing is adequate for the use, adequate for the operations, I think we've provided enough supportive documentation to support that. And I think that, you know, given the fact that we do have the Board of Health approving and requiring a de-restriction, you know, this board certainly has the, the power and the authority to, to approve this with a similar type of restriction.
Yes, Mr. Zell.
They've tried to help solve the problem. The problem is the bank. The conservation has gotten in touch with the bank. There was one girl here for one meeting. She had only been there for three days, she didn't know anything about it, anything about the problem. She just came green, she learned about it here, she said she would go back and talk to them about it and she'd be in touch. That was the last time anybody's ever heard or seen from the bank. They make no correspondence to us, to John Peck, to conservation, to the planning board. Conservation said that they will get in touch with the bank, when they get in touch with the bank, they will let us know. That was at least four weeks, six weeks ago. The planning board said the same thing, we've never heard from anybody. So the bank's problem is there and they won't correct it and they won't get in touch with anybody to correct it. Now, that retention pond has never worked. It's right up to the top now, so we get some more rain, it comes over onto our property. It comes over onto our property, there's a pipe that goes through there, but it's not connected. So it just comes over our land, washing the land away with damage into our side. That's the problem. Now, John Peck had, went before the conservation. They made arrangements that everything was going to be taken care of, but now John has no money to fix it. So we're right back, I don't know.
Square one.
I don't know, but they've tried to do the best they could with the situation that they're in. But the bank is the problem.
Any other questions or comments, gentlemen? Jerry, you look like you have questions?
No, I don't have questions. I'm pro-business, I really am a pro-business, but I'm also tied up in this, in this part of it right here. So I'm, I'm a little bit betwixt, I guess. I mean, I think you're playing this fine, I think having less parking spaces is perfect, you know, I'm all for. Every time I pull in the Stop and Shop and in the other place, I just, any, any mall, it's ridiculous. I agree. I mean, I just wish you had looked in and maybe buy a little bit more land so we call it green space and everybody'd be happy. You know, but obviously that didn't happen.
They could buy more land behind them.
Well, that's what, that's what I was saying, that's not much of the last time when you were here, that's, you know, since it's wetlands, it's useless.
But, but we'd still have to build an additional six, ten.
No, it wouldn't happen.
We would, we would, because, because right now, so.
You would be, I think, we'd be much.
I think we'd be, yeah, I think, I think.
That's actually that I have, because you, you haven't, I don't think the size of the building from when you had that land has shrunk an inch. And so.
Well.
That's my concern, but I think that, it, it seems like my.
I think that's how we left it the last time.
Yeah.
But it would be a green lawn and then they'd have to have more parking, correct?
Well, exactly, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah, but I think, I think if the forty, if you had forty-five percent of, of the, the space, you'd be fine.
I'd feel more comfortable voting for it, to be honest.
But, but, but I, I want to try to peel the layers back on that a little bit more, because, let's just say we did it. Let's just say we went back to the, so first of all, we, we, I don't believe that portion of that area has already been deeded to be, you know, a green area of no building, right? So it's already not gonna be developed, right?
Okay, I'm not sure about that, that's, I mean, the, the, and I, I, you guys have done a ton of work, so I, I get that and I, and I want, I'm pro-business too. Like we, the town needs more business and I think that, that I'm a thousand percent open to that, but I also want, I, I, a concern that somebody said in the last meeting and the concern that I have is that that doesn't meet the, the expectations that we have for the town.
But we're, we're requesting one parking space per two hundred and twenty-four square feet, right? We would be requesting that, even if we added an additional area and got to the forty-five percent, we'd still have to build more parking. We don't want to build more parking, right? So if we'd be requesting the same variance for one per two twenty-four, I, I'm trying to understand.
I would feel better about granting that variance, to be very frank, like I'd feel better about voting yes on that variance if the, if the development had more space. That's my concern, is that, mainly because that the hardship seems to me to be the, the size of the building.
The hardship is the parking requirement for the use.
Right, which is literally tied to this number of square feet in the building.
Right.
So if you had half the square foot of the building, you wouldn't be here asking for parking.
And that's the economic, no, and that's the economic hardship and that's why.
Perhaps.
And, but that's why, but, well, we're, I'm here testifying before, before the board. But that's why, again, when you look at the specific use, we're not asking for, you know, we could go and we could build the same size, we could build a smaller building with more parking spaces and put a more intensive use on this property, right? We wouldn't need to come to the zoning board of appeals. But we don't want to do that, we want to pursue a less intensive use with a lesser parking requirement because that's all the use needs. And the board has all the authority to consider that type of application. It's in the zoning regs, it's in state statutes. So, so I guess I'm just trying to understand, obviously, we, we've put a lot of time and effort into this project and it's, and it's.
And now, and it's, yeah.
And we're, and we're, you know, we're here because we want to make the board comfortable. And we're seeking approval, so the last thing I want to do is walk out of here without that. If there was something else that we could provide to add comfort for the board, because I think that you're empowered by the bylaws of the town of Halifax, you're empowered by the Massachusetts state statutes and you're completely within your rights to consider this type of variance for this type of parking requirement, these types of requirements.
Even if they go back to, to the ditch there, they can't build, it's no building. It's, it's unbuildable.
It's a no build zone.
It's oiling, if they go out into an out shape, it's not, it's not built. Believe me, it's, it's.
But we'd be asking town council whether we can consider a variance based on a hardship that, based on the type of business. If it was a restaurant and they always had a hundred people there, right, you'd need a parking.
Done.
So can, we need, we need guidance on, are we allowed to grant or consider a variance where the hardship is based on the type of business to change the square footage requirements for parking?
And I think at the end of, if, if restrictions can be placed by the board or as conditions based on use.
And what kind of conditions on the variance are we talking?
That our variance is limited.
Yes, oh.
To.
That's specific use of the building.
I mean, if, if we can do that and our town council said we could, I mean, I, I would be okay with it.
I think the answer is yeah, I mean, I think we can as long as we find that the hardships are met and we're comfortable granting that variance.
Is that a hardship? That's the question.
Well, I think that's, that's like.
The other thing, I don't know what.
I need a lawyer to tell us that.
Exactly.
The other, the other thing I, I would like to see also, and you, you made reference to it, was both the manual publication of the Institute of Transportation and Engineers and you also made reference to another study that was submitted, would you have that available?
It's actually attached.
Is it?
Yeah, so including the appendices are all of the industry standard data and also a parking study that we did at multiple O'Reilly locations. And actually did.
Is it specific to O'Reilly or is it specific to?
It's specific to O'Reilly Auto Parts. From the last page.
No, the, the place in Hanover, how many parking places are you allowed there? Do that strip them out?
In Hanover?
Yeah, Hanover. By Hannover law.
I'm not sure, but their parking requirement for retail is probably closer to one per two fifty.
Two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's, and that's somewhat of an industry standard is generally four parking spaces per thousand instead of ten parking spaces per thousand, which is Halifax requirements. And when you actually look at some of these rates and auto parts is, you know, the, the actual empirical demand for auto parts stores is one point seven spaces per thousand square feet.
I mean, I've been to a lot of auto parts stores and I think I'm among one of four people in that store.
Right, that's because the majority, and correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the building, I think we discussed this on the, on the first meeting, is, is the storage of the parts, it's not the actual retail space where your customers and have access to, I think you brought it out, made rather clear on the last meeting.
And the water.
It's mostly the back room where you have to get the spot plugs and the.
Exactly.
Whatnot for per, which I feel makes this a little unique to the other variances that we've had, as in strictly following the bylaw. You know, this, you know, we said the actual retail, the actual retail space of the store, a third, maybe, maybe forty percent and sixty of it.
It's three thousand square feet roughly, which would equate to thirty parking spaces and we are proposing thirty-four, so we're over if you use that.
If you were to use that.
If you were to use that requirement.
So roughly half the store?
Less, less than half.
Would be for the retail end of it?
Correct.
Three thousand.
Over seven two fifty, yeah, so less than half, forty percent of the store is actual retail area accessible to the public.
And a lot of their business is probably delivery.
Yeah.
They probably deliver a lot of their parts.
It's certainly trending that way.
Right.
Yeah. And I think that's another reason why, from a de-restriction standpoint or from a, from a variance restriction standpoint, that is what makes this unique versus like a normal retail store where most of their, where it's very different. That ratio is, you know, ten percent back of house, ninety percent retail area.
So there's gonna be delivery vehicles used from O'Reilly?
So, so like I said.
Are the delivery parts and everything still coming out of the loading zone? Loading platform there where they go out and deliver to?
No, a lot, a lot of that stuff, if someone like does like online orders or stuff like that, that would actually come from, you know, O'Reilly's corporate, I think. Maybe there could be some local things dealt with out of the store, but that's.
Okay, there was a truck designated for.
No, there is a designated truck and that'd be more like a FedEx pickup or UPS or something like that.
Oh. ADAP, I was thinking of the cars with the big, you know, the hat and the top.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that are making the deliveries from the store to the, there isn't, there's not any of that.
No, they don't, that's out of their current business model.
Gentlemen.
Do we need legal advice or are we?
I, I think I, that's what I would, I would prefer, like to see at least a, an opinion drafted from a, from a legal town council to see why you're smiling, you don't think so?
It's, it's, I don't, what are we gonna ask?
Well, I think.
If it's that, what the hardship is.
Yes, about the uniqueness of, of the building and its use and if in fact.
For that use.
And what?
And it's only gonna be for that use only.
That means we're more uncomfortable, that we're building the building that only now is a specific. I mean, we can, yeah, I'm.
Just to add on what you said, you're, you're building it specific to what you're talking about, so anybody else that would come in would be treated like any other occupancy change that would come before me. If, if occupancy change comes before me and I know there's variance on it, they have to come back for permission for the specific use of it.
See, I agree with that.
And then we're gonna tear the building down?
I agree with that, so that if another used occupancy comes in and they're gonna use all seventy-two hundred and twenty-five square feet for retail, that's completely different than, than what it's.
You could have an empty building towards two years.
Right, so what happens in that case? So it's either.
Like he's, I, I think what he said, every, every variance that we grant from the board is, is specific to the application that's been before us. So if O'Reilly's moves out, they would have to satisfy the board. They would have to satisfy the board.
We'd still have an empty seven thousand square foot building that you can't tear down, that's what I don't want.
Well, I, I think, I don't, listen.
There's no guarantee.
I don't know if the town wants that building in that.
Walmart is supposed to store a lot of things.
I agree.
So you could be left with a two hundred thousand square foot empty Walmart too.
Correct.
Like you, you can't, it, it's really hard to, to regulate and govern based on what ifs. Now, but that, that being said, you know, if someone want to come in here and use the space for retail, it could be simple, they can't use the entire building. They can't occupy the entire building, they have to come before this board and someone demonstrate the same thing. They'd have to rip up and put in a larger septic system, there's, you know, there's a number of things and, and O'Reilly's isn't in the business of, you know, they've signed a long-term lease for this property. Yeah, so, so there, this is a considerable investment that they wouldn't, you know, do and leave any year.
And actually, I think the board, as we had spoken last time, I keep sort of dumping this on you.
No.
But anyway, yeah. We were, we spoke about Walmart, you know, and the parking requirements at Walmart. We did make specific adjustments, you'll notice behind the Walmart is all green. That is technically parking space.
Right.
Can be used at some point, they came up with an alternative that they would leave it green and they use those pavers with the specific holes in it so that it could support a car or vehicle, but yet it was green. And we had, and then up with a gigantic asphalt runway.
But nobody parks there.
But nobody parks there.
So you created all that disturbance unnecessarily, that could have remained wooded, you know, that could have had a less of a stormwater runoff.
But yet they did comply with the retail parking requirement by leaving it green.
They did, they did.
Without asphalt.
Right.
That was a huge concern with the people that lived out back, you know, with the, with the runoff. That was a huge concern with the people that lived out back, you know, with the, with the runoff and, and also the neighbors on the 58 side with the runoff. I don't know if you recall all that, I do. Yeah, I mean, they were open arms, you know, for the, for the runoff and Walmart came up with that, with that alternative. I seem to think that with restrictions of the use of, of the retail restricting it to a certain area, that it's along the lines of the same thing. If it's included in the variances that we grant. Again, I would feel more comfortable with town council saying, yes, okay, we, we can do that. Or, or the alternative being, no, are you crazy, you can't do that, you know? I would feel more comfortable, I don't know how the other board members feel.
I'd like to get an opinion from town council.
Jerry?
Yep.
You don't think we need one? It's okay, you can say no.
Yeah, I think, I think they're going to say the hardship is the square footage and they don't have to.
Well, I.
Well, but this, this board, I, I think this board has, I want to keep reminding you, you guys have the authority to interpret this type of thing. We're requesting a variance from 1 for 100 to 1 for 224. You're completely within state prescribed rights and town of Halifax bylaws to, to approve that request.
That should be the question to be answered. Yeah, is it within their rights to, to grant that?
I think you're doing more comfortable with that also. Has the enforcement mark, is that how you know?
You guys are approving and I'm disapproving, so.
All right, well, I'll, I'll need a, that in the form of a motion that will continue the, the hearing until, when's our next date?
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
June 3rd. And, uh, I don't know if we need permission from the selectmen to request the opinion of town council, if we can just do that on our own, but in which case we'll take the necessary steps to, to consult with the town council regarding the, uh, direction of the board, whether we can in fact, uh, implement those types of variances and if in fact we, we can do that. Just tapping away over there. Is, is, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think that's the, that's the answer, I mean, if, if it's okay, then I'm, I'm part.
Anything else you want to add to the letter or?
Well, we're asking if they can claim a hardship based on the type of business in regards to.
The amount of space that's being used for retail versus the.
Well, yes, uh, but specifically, um, uh, square footage per parking space.
Right.
Is that, is, can a, can a business legitimately claim a hardship based on the type of business they do?
All right, that would be the second part. Alana? If the, the hardship question.
Yes.
All right, I'll accept a motion to, uh, continue the, the hearing until the, uh, the June date and in the meantime, request, uh, the legal advice from town council.
All right, I'll make a motion to ex, uh, extend this meeting to June 3rd, uh, with the advice of town council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, voting on that is Kasia, Pete, Peter, myself, Bob and Jerry. Jerry, you have your vote?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we'll continue this until the, uh, the June hearing.
Thank you.
Hopefully we should have an answer back by then. Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate your time, thank you, Mrs. Zellman.
Tomorrow break.
Sure, we'll take a two-minute break.
Just, just. Yeah, I think it was just.
First time I've ever worn six months.
No.
See, you bitch when it's cold.
I know.
We'll get like a weekend in the spring.
Uh, yeah, I think we're going to have one day.
Yeah, it was today, actually.
Tomorrow's supposed to be nice and then back to the.
Like Milwaukee, we'll get five inches of snow.
I don't need that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
No, by the way, I, I agree with you. Cracking over the door is just good.
It's coming in now though. You can feel it, there's a breeze up there.
I am, I'm.
Not me. I should have a comment.
I mean, you never know if they're going to close a building, but corporations just say.
They're going to own the building.
Are they going to own it?
Yeah, they're going to own the building.
I'm sure, I'm, I don't think they're going to close it either.
They bought the property.
I don't know.
They're going to spend a lot of money.
Oh, hey, this, this, they did a lot of things, I mean.
There's a ton of work.
There's a ton of stuff here to make this, I can imagine.
I don't know.
But they could have done half that.
I don't see.
If they just, if you just didn't.
What? That's it?
This goes, that's what, it's like, okay, whatever, but just to, just meet the rules. Nobody cares about the parking, the parking rules there, make sure that everybody, like that, it's, it's not 106 of West Bridgewater out there, like that's, you know. If they have taken 100 square feet off the building, we had to make it a little bit smaller, so they, they aren't using the bus.
I think it's like, because it's like a franchise they have to set up.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, I'm sure the building, they're not going to move. Engineering, everything else is all set, it's just the cutting, you know, they send it out, the pots are up, the building's stuff's already in someone's warehouse.
The, the, we spent three hours talking to Hollywood people over there, make sure they weren't selling cars over there. It's a brutal, it's a brutal. It's like, why didn't I spend three hours of my life talking about that?
Something else involved there too. Yeah, and make sure.
Right, if they had, if they had bought the whole land in the back of.
Yeah.
I mean, what would that have cost? I mean, it's what they.
And I didn't, I didn't mean to be that guy and laugh when he was talking with the lawyer, but like, the lawyer is coming back, whatever, whatever ends with the lawyers, we still got to make the decision, why do we want that and grant that variance? Whatever the lawyers have to us, that's the problem. Because it's like, all right. The lawyers may be like, well, you can, but if, we could just do it, you could do it. But now we want to pull out, like they, if they met the square footage requirement, you could have put six more parking spaces in there, that's not.
I know, that was, that was a lot of.
They could have come over and said, hey, we took two, we took 1,000 square feet off the building and we, we shrunk the parking spaces by four feet. Okay, I'm, I'm better with that, they just, they just want that, that's going to be there forever. Meanwhile, across from Tommy's, right? Like. It's like going there. For our, Joe's going to graduate from high school, I think, still going to be back there. Going there, that has plenty of parking spots.
The old combo.
Oh, oh, the old cross.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many of them, they, they, they call it in the winter now.
They do?
The guy come in there, maybe they go and swap them, couple of swaps.
Really? What are they doing over there?
Police can let her.
Oh. If you get it back, they think of those trees.
Pretty soon the trees will be coming out to the roof.
Right. How long's that been there like that?
25 years, 30 years?
That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bad day.
This was a mistake for tonight, we have to explain to the people, we can't hear them tonight. It wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't know, man, I can't, I. I'm fresh out of gas.
All right, we'll reopen after our break. Okay, uh, how are you? Good, good. We have a, we ran into a bit of a problem for tonight on the, on the farmhouse. We, uh, didn't post that we were having a meeting regarding your property tonight. So because it wasn't posted and it's not on our agenda, we can't discuss it. We, we, we have to wait until the June.
3rd.
3rd. Now, we're still within time constraints and do we, do we need an extension or do we want to get one or?
I mean, we can get one, it's short, it can't hurt, but according to Amy's nine days, so.
From the end of the hearing?
From last one.
Right, so we'll go. All right, we just have to do it in June, it wasn't posted, it was an oversight on our part, our mistake.
Okay, 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 thank, thank you very much.
All right, so June 3rd, we'll see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
What else do we have? It's what?
Can we have them in here?
Not really. No, it was not, it was on our, on our discussion list.
There's no discussion.
Yeah, because we can't, we can't have a hearing, the hearing's over.
Which is why you.
Because you can't, you can't.
It's on the agenda, so we can't have a hearing.
I checked.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we're going to have to vote on it somehow.
Plus, we need, they need their architect here for me to discuss those.
That, that, it is fine, yeah.
All right, what else do we have? Alana, what else do we have?
So, mail.
Mail, let's do the mail.
That's nice.
Gordon Andrews. Uh, 244 Elm Street, Halifax, Mass. Dear Mr. Andrews, this is from Alana Snow of the Zoning Board of Appeals Secretary.
I know her.
How's it like that?
Nice.
Regarding the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals Open Meeting Violation of April 2nd, 2019. Dear Mr. Andrews, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals received your Open Meeting Violation Complaint on April 2nd, 2019 regarding the March 11th, 2019 Executive Session. At the Zoning Board Meeting on March 11th, 2019, it can be heard on the digital audio recording that Code Chairman Casaya Nizarella was recused. And the remaining board members, Clerk Peter Parcellum, Member Robert Durgan, Member Gerald Joy, Alternate Member Din Bursari. Motion had voted to move into Executive Session. This cannot be seen on the video recording as the video was cut short. The members of the zoning, Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals have been reminded that a roll call vote must be taken to open and close future executive sessions. As the matter discussed during the Executive Session, Halifax versus Bergstrom and the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals, Link of Civil Action Number 16MISC 000681 has been resolved. The board will likely vote to release these minutes at the next scheduled Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting on May 6th, 2019. If you'd like to request a copy after the approval of their release or have any further questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me by phone or email sincerely. And then enclosed is the answers to the, uh, questions regarding the violations. All right, Halifax Planning Board, Kevin Lewis, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Property Owners Cumberland Farms, Inc. April 19th, 2019, regarding petition, petition number 19-SPR-03. Dear Mr. Lewis, at a meeting held on Thursday, April 18th, 2019, the Halifax Planning Board voted to approve your petition 19-SPR-03 for a site plan to build in O'Reilly Auto Parts Store, 7,225 square feet commercial building to be located at 330 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Shown on Assessors Map 63, Lot 30, Book 42758, Page 1, by unanimous vote. And enclosed the specifics of it. Halifax, town of Halifax, April 22nd, 2019, from the Building Inspector Robert Picarelli. Dear Amelia, the letter in response to your email is sent to Charles Sealy, the Town Administrator, which he forwarded to me on April 18th, 2019. In your email, you're requiring about the term of transient, transient accommodations and what it means to home resident in Halifax. Because you have not provided information, any information on a specific property or location, I would be limited in my attempt to answer your question and will do so to the best of my abilities at this time. The use transient accommodation in context of your question appears to provide a couple possible determinations in Section 167.7, Summary of Use Regulations. Accordingly, a determination will also be necessary as to whether this use is intended as a primary or accessory use. As a residential use listed as a tourist home allowable only by special permit in the AI agricultural residential district. As a commercial use listed as hotels, motels or overnight cabins only allowable by special permit in the business district. As this information is only a guide on, on a brief opinion at this time, I would suggest you schedule an appointment with this officer and provide as much information as can to ensure that you're receiving the correct information. This determination is for zoning purposes, only approval or any necessary permitting from all permitting from all other applicable boards and or departments will be required. If there could be any further assistance, please let us know. RG Automotive, uh, Mr. Richard Green, 925 Plymouth Street. Dear, April 22nd, 2019, to the Planning Board. At a meeting on Thursday, April 18th, 2019, the Halifax Planning Board voted to grant your petition 891 for a special permit for a sign larger than allowable by right to be located at 925 Plymouth Street, Halifax, in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaw, 16713 exterior sign, subsection 167, 13E, 14 and B. And in accordance with 167-13CD to allow a four-foot in height by 26-inch, no, foot in length wall sign to be placed on the front of the building. Special permit was granted due to the fact that the board felt it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood and it is in an industrial zone and the building is more than 100 feet from the road. Cecily, Gordon Andrews Planning Board. Old Colony Planning Council, their agenda called to order, if anybody wants to review that, they're certainly welcome. Aron Berger, Delisa and Harris, LLP Attorneys at Law. Via email and first-class mail regarding the property at 280 South Street, Halifax, Mass. Robert Gaynor, Chairman, Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Mr. Gaynor, as you know, this officer represents George A. Tebault, Manager of Petra South Street LLC, with respect to the application for a special permit slash finding presently before the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals relating to the property owned by Richard A. Merly, Manager of Civil Lee Farm LLC located at 280 South Street in Halifax. I am running to confirm that Mr. Tebault is withdrawing his application without prejudice pursuant to my conversation with Amy Kessel, Town Council. I do not, I do not have to appear at the hearing scheduled for May 6th on this matter. According to the site visit presently scheduled for Saturday, May 4th, 2019, is not necessary and should be canceled. William A. Aron Berger III.
Should we have a motion on that?
They withdrew it.
Should they have a motion to accept it?
To accept the letter?
No, to accept the withdrawal.
Do we, do we probably do that?
I think so.
Yeah. Usually we do, I think, to that.
I think so.
All right, I'll accept a motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal of, uh, a petition for 280 South Street, Halifax, Mass. Is submitted by Richard A. Merly, Manager of Civil Lee Farm, as indicated by their attorney, William H. Aron Berger III in their, in their letter dated to the board of May 1st, 2019.
I'll make a motion for petition 890 to accept the, um, withdrawal letter without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, thank you, Robert. Planning Board, notice of public hearing, the Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting, First Floor of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the following articles. To see if the town will vote to amend. The different articles regarding marijuana establishment, zoning definitions regarding marijuana establishment, multifamily dwellings, multifamily dwellings or apartments. multifamily dwellings, multifamily dwellings or apartments, multifamily dwellings. If any of the members would like to read that more carefully, they're certainly welcome to read the four pages. Article twenty-sixth, single family detached dwellings. All right, I think that's it for mail. Bills, did we do the bills?
Bills.
We did?
I don't think so.
I don't think, oh, here they are, here they are. God, she wants everything. Next scheduled meeting, June third, two thousand nineteen. What's that? Anybody else want, you guys want to go through all of these new articles or you want to read them on your own? What is the pleasure of the board? Ashley, Alana, do you want to make copies?
I was just gonna say I can email to you.
Well, that's even better. Can you send an email to each one of the members?
Sure.
And we can review that. Good thinking, Alana.
Okay.
All right, how about a motion to adjourn?
How should we adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those who think we say aye.
Aye.
All she carries. Thank you, gentlemen.